The City of San Juan Bautista, regular city council meeting for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020 is now in session. The pledge of allegiance, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, we said we wanted to do it.
No, I said I wanted to do it.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice.
So. The roll call? I thought that was going to be. Mayor Edge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Okay.
Councilmember De Vries?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
No.
A quorum is present. Thank you. Okay. Our city attorney, Deborah Mall?
This is Madam Mayor Dean. The city council running to close session at five o'clock. Two matters were heard, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Direction was given to legal counsel and no reportable actions. And that concludes the session. The session was concluded at five forty. And that concludes the report out, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. So now we go on to public comment. Any comment that is not on the agenda? We have three minutes. So do we have any public comment?
Can you please suggest a more specific reference to San Juan Bautista? I just wanted to announce that there's a very important meeting, whether county or supervisor, to drive this project. I am not sure what the consensus is of our council members tonight regarding this project. We want to see what the members, I'm hoping, wondering if you can share with us that you've all considered and are seeking a close look at this project and perhaps can come out and make a public statement in opposition to this negative element as I feel personally it would be harmful to our small community. It would be a drain on our infrastructure in the county and you have to do the closest thing to it. I think it would have a very negative effect on our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Anyone else?
I don't see any hands. Jacinda? Jacinda? Your honor, is that you?
I think someone has a question. I'll put it in.
Yes, this is me.
Did you have a comment?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I have a couple comments. Thank you for all of us coming to discuss some of the challenges that were not licensed. My other comment is I've seen three cars of homeless people. Where is city standard on that? And what are we going to do for the kids that are staying at home and have nothing to do and have nothing to do? They're also a part of this community and I think we need to start focusing on getting outlets for these kids that are staying home to do homeschool.
Anything else?
Anything else?
I just got home, I'm sorry. I have my ears long gone, but my concern is the kids, the homeless, and you know, this is, I'm off of the water, I'm getting a very low pressure at my house. I don't know about anybody else, but it's pretty humid. And now that they've just closed more of this fire, it's also impacting San Juan, I think. But if...
Okay. All right. I think somebody has their television on. If you can mute yourself, there's some kind of noise in the background.
Jackie, can you please mute yourself?
Give me the phone, please.
I can mute.
Is it starting?
Yes, I'm listening. That's a good one.
Thank you. Okay. So now, we don't have any other comments, we'll go on to item three, the consent items. All matters listed in the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion authorizing actions indicated for those items so designated. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a member of the city council, a staff member, or a citizen. So, items A through F are on the consent.
You're here?
Okay.
I'd like to talk about E for a few minutes, but I need to pull that.
E, okay.
I make a motion.
I'll second. I don't think you can motion or second on that, but, okay.
Are you making a motion to?
To.
Pull item E?
Or enact.
Okay.
I make a motion to enact all items except for E.
Except, okay. All right, good. Thank you. And then, Councilman Freeman seconded.
I will second, okay, absolutely.
Yes, okay, good. All right. So, we go ahead and talk about the approved resolution, 2020 XX, confirming executive order 01-.
Do you vote? Do you vote on this?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. I need a roll call vote. Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
I don't think, I don't think you need roll call, but yes, I love this.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously. Thank you. So now we can go on to item E.
Well, yes, Madam Mayor, I wanted to talk a little bit about this because at the county level, the county, two weeks ago, asked that the cities pass an executive order for face coverings for their kind of like, let's say, chicken to eat. So I'm just trying to confirming that. And the county board superwoman was passing it and Hollister did not pass one last night. They tied two, or just led another two weeks, so who knows what's going to happen, but I'm for, I'm for place net, I'm for social distance, I'm for trying to fight this virus. I'm tired of having a, what do you call it, exposure rate of eight percent. What's the word, Jackie?
Poisoning.
What? Infection rate? I don't know, literally, I don't know. Eight percent, we need to be at five or less get off of watch in California, and I'd like to see that and what are the ways we can do this. I'm worried this comes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now, do we go ahead and vote on this?
Does anybody else want to comment on that?
Vice Mayor Jordan?
No, I'm good.
Councilman Flores?
I'm good.
Okay. Councilman De Vries?
No comment.
Okay, thank you.
No comment?
So, any comments from the members of the public?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman. I totally agree with you, with Councilman Freeman. It's long overdue, I don't know what we're waiting for, because we're missing three seasons very shortly, and a miracle of face covering ordinance in our town, I think is the right move that we can do to stop the progression of spread of this virus. I also feel that because we are a current town, we invite and welcome outsiders to come in and enjoy our hometown, and this would bring along people from other areas with high infection rate and unknown infected people wandering our streets. So, thank you, Councilman Freeman, for bringing this to light, and I congratulate us for doing the heavy work, and we're shaking our bodies for you to resolve this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, if we don't have anybody else, we can go on and vote on this. Need a motion?
I'll move to, if we vote on it, I mean. I second it.
So, roll call vote. So this is for item 3E, which is approved resolution, 2020 XX, confirming executive order 01-2020 issued July 14th, 2020, making the state's guidance for the use of face coverings to be enforceable by administrative citation during this state of emergency. Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we go on to item four, presentations, informal items and reports. 4A is proclamations. One, National Health Center Week, and A2 is Agricultural Work Health Day.
Do you have anyone here to accept them?
What was that?
Is there someone here to accept them?
No, where is that? That's what church don't do.
Okay.
Okay. So as far as we know, there's nobody here to accept the proclamations, and I'm going to go ahead. Oh, there is?
We're not, we're not, this is Rosa, we're not present, but we're on the line.
Okay, good. Good. All right. So, the first one, I'm going to read them, it's kind of lengthy, so bear with me. Where, I think I'm going to take my mask off. Whereas for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. Whereas, community health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving both rural and urban communities, and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, community health centers serve one in every five residents of rural areas. Whereas, community health centers serve as beacons of essential resources and support in testing and treatment in the face of the global coronavirus pandemic, and will continue to offer reliable, affordable, high-quality care against COVID-19 for America's most vulnerable and underserved communities. Whereas, every day, community health centers develop new approaches in integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. Whereas, community health centers nationally employ more than 236,000 people, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and certified nurse midwives who work as part of multidisciplinary clinic teams designed to treat the whole patient. Whereas, the community health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status, improving healthcare outcomes, and reducing healthcare system costs. Whereas, community health centers are on the front lines of emerging healthcare crises, providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to public health threats in the wake of natural disasters. Whereas, National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's over 1,400 health center organizations with over 12,000 service delivery sites, their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers opened their doors more than 50 years ago. Now therefore, the city council of the city of San Juan Bautista hereby proclaims August 9th through the 15th as National Health Center Week, and encourage all Americans to take part by visiting their health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's community health centers and the communities they serve. Yay! So now I'm going to go on and read the Agricultural Work Health Day.
Rosa, want to say anything?
Oh, I'm sorry, Rosa, did you want to say something? I thought I remembered saying something.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate the lengthy reading, but more so, I appreciate the support of the city council of San Juan Bautista, and in celebration, since this was, this is an unusual year, rather than visiting our center, we actually decided to celebrate through a food giveaway, and we had the hitting the front line event. It started, the first one started on August 9th in San Juan Bautista, Miss Puita Elementary School, where we actually served 453 participants, 394 adults, 59 children. There were a total of 226 vehicles that came through, there was also a handful that came through after we closed. We actually were going to open from four to six, and we opened a little bit earlier than four. But I want to also acknowledge and thank Mayor Edge, who participated once again, and Kathy Corbless representing Councilmember Flores. It was just a very vibrant event. We followed through the farmworker health, where we had, on August 11th, we had, by appointment, dental exams for farmworker children, and we served about 36 children that day. And the largest event was actually at Hollister, where we had over 589 participants with 337 vehicles. And so overall, we served over 1,000 community members in this week, and through this special event, and we really want to thank Roderick San Juan Bautista, Oster Schuber, Taylor Farms, every number of grocers, and also Redneecastation, who provided a refrigerated truck, and the Agrocon casino, who provided therapeutic music, which really helped provide the immediate convenience, Madam. So thank you all that participated, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. So, does anybody else have a comment or congratulations to the health center council people? If not, I'm going to read the second one. The second one is the proclamation Agricultural Worker Health Day. Whereas, an estimated three to five million migrant and seasonal farmworkers are employed in the nation's multi-billion dollar agricultural industry, and whose backbreaking labor makes possible the production and harvest of many crops. Thanks goes to those who have worked at the front lines during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, agriculture ranks among the most dangerous occupations, subjecting workers to health and occupational risks, yet migrant and seasonal farmworkers, by virtue of their work and economically disadvantaged status, confront significant barriers to assessing doctors and needed health services. And whereas, the migrant health program enacted in 1962 planted the seed that has enabled communities to establish migrant health centers, which today serve more than a million migrant seasonal farmworkers and their families. And whereas, migrant health centers have evolved into strong models of primary care practice, addressing the complex needs of a vulnerable population while demonstrating the value of outreach, patient education, linguistically and culturally competent care to promote better health and ensure health communities. And whereas, studies have confirmed that migrant health centers deliver comprehensive, high-quality, and cost-effective preventative and primary healthcare services in addition to lifting the barriers of healthcare and reducing health disparities. Now therefore, the city council of the city of San Juan Bautista hereby proclaims the 11th of August, 2020, as Agricultural Worker Health Day in the city of San Juan Bautista. Yay! Another applause. Anybody from representing the agriculture worker out there?
Well, this is Rosa, so, once again, our clinic actually was founded as a farmworker clinic, and it later got recognized as both a migrant farmworker clinic and a community health center, but it was founded by farmworkers in the community 45 years ago. So, we're at the heart of this, and we continue to support the farmworker community and partnering to ensure that we have a healthy community, even in these very difficult times. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Rosa. And I'd like to add that, you know, these people, I see them working in the fields every single day, and in this heat, and they put the food that we eat, the produce that we buy in the store, they harvest it. And let me tell you, they're out there working very hard every single day and on weekends. And I have been helping with food distributions now since, I don't even remember when we started, but there is a big need for us to support our local farmworkers, all farmworkers. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you, Rosa. So.
Okay.
All right. So now we go on to.
PG&E.
Item 4B, and that is public safety, power shut-off, PSPS program update presentation by PG&E. I'd like to add also, if we could just hold our questions until after the presentation. Thank you.
So, tonight we have Gina from PG&E and Stuart to present an update on the PSPS program. It was a year ago, in fact, I think it was during the Rotarians' ghost walk, that we had a power shut-off of the first one. It did not affect our city, but it affected our neighbors, our immediate neighbors, and we had a center, a little center, the PG&E set up here at the Mission, and that was our first experience with the PSPS program. And boy, since then, I have been invited to training on how to use their software, so the city can track this directly, and I've been really impressed with some of their presentations and progress they've made. So it's great for Gina to come tonight with Stuart and give the city council an update, because the three months that we're aware of the most vulnerable to fires and heavy winds, as we know, because we're in the midst of one now, a fire is really September, October, November, so this could be a challenging fire season, and PG&E plays an integral role in that. So with that, I'll defer to Gina, she can get her slides set up here, and there you go.
Thank you for having us. Stu and I are pleased to come and present the Community Wildfire Safety Program with the San Juan Bautista City Council tonight. We'll go ahead and get started with the safety message from Stu.
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name is Stuart Roth, I go by Stu, I'm a senior public safety specialist with gas and electric. Prior to coming to PG&E, I did almost 35 years of the fire service in the city of Monterey. I have the great fortune of working with your city attorney, Deborah Mall, who is one of the finest that I've ever worked for, and probably one of the finest that I've ever worked for in Monterey, so it's great to see her working with all of the great people.
Thanks, Dave.
Well, I'm just being honest, because it's so helpful for me, so in a lot of things that she was able to accomplish, it's great to see her using that knowledge with all the people in my community. So, in our safety message, every meeting before we start, whether there's us like this, or there's a bunch of us, we always do safety lessons. We identify where we're at, of course, we all know where our addresses are, or where the city council chambers are. We identify a place where we can get under, and in this case, I'm going to share with you, please, two exits, or at least two ways that you can get out of your residence, or out of the full event of fire, or some other type of emergency. I know it's the 21st century, but all we got is still duck, cupboard, and hole, so in the event of earthquake, get under something very stable, hold on to it, get docked, if you have nothing to get under, get into a corner, or into a doorway, those are very safe places to be. In the event of an active shooter, remember, we want to hide out, we want to give it out, sorry, and we want to hide out, and then, in the last resort, we go ahead and take out. And one of the things that law enforcement and others have found is that if you start from, if it's at the active shooter, it confuses them, and oftentimes scares them off, so just pull some of their orientals. And then last, during this presentation, if any of you have experienced any type of emergency, please write in and say emergency, and give us the information, what's going on, and we'll help direct any resources to you. And last, it's very hot out, so please, 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 stay hydrated, thirst can catch up to you, I really appreciate, I was quite pleased with all the farmworkers out there, keep cautious, they're taking, the firefighters, the forego down disaster yesterday on the river fires, so, but it doesn't have to be a firefighter or a farmer, if you're one of us just not hydrating effectively, and we think clearly, if we can't, we're responsible citizens in the community, so, please stay hydrated.
Thank you, Stu. This is why he's the public safety specialist, he knows all of the safety, the care. So, what, sorry, slides are jumping. What we're here to discuss today are the 2020 PS improvements that we've made from last year, our local projects with progress date.
San Juan Batista, Oscar Schuber, Taylor Prime, there are a number of brokers. And also Redneek Sensitive Patient who provided a refrigerated truck. And Deacon Confratino who provided therapeutic music which really helped provide the emergency medicine. So, thank you all that participated and thank you for your support.
Thank you. So, does anybody else have a comment or congratulations to the health center? Council people? If not, I'm going to read the second one. The second one is the Pocumation Agricultural Worker Health Day. Whereas an estimated three to five million migrant and seasonal farmworkers are employed in the nation's multi-billion dollar agricultural industry and whose backbreaking labor makes possible the production and harvest of many crops. Thanks goes to those who have worked at the frontlines during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas agriculture ranks among the most dangerous occupations subjecting workers to health and occupational risks, yet migrant and seasonal farmworkers by virtue of their work and economically disadvantaged status confront significant barriers to assessing doctors and needed health services. And whereas the migrant health program enacted in 1962 planted the seed that has enabled communities to establish migrant health centers, which today serve more than a million migrant seasonal farmworkers and their families. And whereas migrant health centers have evolved into strong models of primary care practice addressing the complex needs of a vulnerable population while demonstrating the value of outreach, patient education, linguistically and culturally competent care to promote better health and ensure health communities. And whereas studies have confirmed that migrant health centers deliver comprehensive, high-quality and cost-effective preventative and primary healthcare services in addition to lifting the barriers of healthcare and reducing health disparities. Now therefore, the city council of the city of San Juan Batista hereby proclaims the 11th of August 2020 as Agricultural Worker Health Day in the city of San Juan Batista. Another applause. Anybody from representing the agriculture worker? Out there?
Well, this is Rosa. So, once again, our clinic actually was founded as a farmworker clinic. And it later got recognized as both a migrant farmworker clinic and a community health center. But it was founded by farmworkers in the community forty-five years ago. So, we're at the heart of this and we continue to support the farmworker community and partnering to ensure that we have a healthy community even in these very difficult times. So, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Rosa. And I'd like to add that, you know, these people, I see them working in the fields every single day and in this heat. And they put the food that we eat, the produce that we buy in the store, they harvest it. And let me tell you, they're out there working very hard every single day and on weekends. And I have been helping with food distributions now since, I don't even remember when we started, but there is a big need for us to support our local farmworkers, all farmworkers. So, I just wanted to add that. Thank you, Rosa. So... All right. So, now we go on to item four B. And that is public safety power shut-off, PSPS program update presentation by PG&E. I'd like to add also, if we could just hold our questions until after the presentation. Thank you.
So, tonight we have Gina from PG&E and Stuart to present an update on the PSPS program. It was a year ago, in fact, I think it was during the Rotarians' ghost walk that we had a power shut-off of the first one. It did not affect our city, but it affected our neighbors, our immediate neighbors. And we had a little center, the PG&E setup here at the Mission. That was our first experience with the PSPS program. And boy, since then, I've been invited to training on how to use their software so the city can track this directly. And I've been really impressed with some of their presentations and progress they've made. So, it's great for Gina to come tonight with Stuart and give the city council an update because the three months that we're aware of the most vulnerable to fires and heavy winds, as we know, because we're in the midst of one now, a fire is really September, October, November. So, this could be a challenging fire season and PG&E plays an integral role in that. So, with that, I'll defer to Gina. She can get her slides set up here and there you go.
Thank you for having us. Stu and I are pleased to come and present the Community Wildfire Safety Program with the San Juan Batista City Council tonight. We'll go ahead and get started with the safety message from Stu.
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name is Stuart Roth. I go by Stu. I'm a senior public safety specialist with Pacific Gas and Electric. Prior to coming to PG&E, I do almost thirty-five years with the fire service in the city of Monterey. I have the great fortune of working with your city attorney, Deb Ball, who is one of the finest that I've ever worked for and probably one of the finest that I've ever taken through Monterey. So, it's great to see her working with all of the great people.
Thanks, Dave.
Well, I'm just being honest because it's so helpful for me. So, and a lot of things that she was able to accomplish, it's great to see her using Deb Ball with all the great people. So, in our safety message, every meeting before we start, whether there's us like this or there's a bunch of us, we always do a safety message. We identify where we're at. Of course, we all know where our addresses are and where the city council chambers are. We identify a place where we can get under. And in this case, I'm going to share with you, please, two exits or at least two ways that you can get out of your residence or out of the event of fire or some other type of emergency. I know it's the 21st century, but all we got is still duck, cupboard, hole. So, in the event of earthquake, get under something very stable, hold on to it, get docked. If you have nothing to get under, get into a corner or into a doorway. Those are very safe places to be. In the event of an active shooter, remember we want to hide out. We want to give it out, sorry, and we want to hide out. And then, in the last resort, we'll go ahead and take out. And one of the things that law enforcement and others have found is that it can start if it's at the active shooter, it can fuse us up and oftentimes scares them off. So, just pull some of their orientals. And then last, during this presentation, if any of you have experienced any type of emergency, please write in and say emergency and give us the information of what's going on and we'll help direct and give resources to you. And last, it's very hot out, so please, please, please stay hydrated. Thirst can catch up to you. I really appreciate those guys and all the farmworkers out there. Be cautious with taking the firefighters, the forego down disaster yesterday on the river fires. So, but it doesn't have to be a firefighter or a farmer. If you're one of us just not hydrating effectively and think clearly and we can't be responsible to citizens in the community, so please stay hydrated.
Thank you, Stu. This is why he's the public safety specialist. He knows all of the safety. Here, so what, sorry, slides are a little jumping. What we're here to discuss today are the 2020 PS improvements that we've made from last year. Our local projects with progress dates. We'll briefly touch on the thirty-year weather analysis and we'll talk about event coordination and information sharing. And then we will have a discussion and you guys can ask questions about anything that we've presented. Stu, if you can pick off the PSPS improvements for 2020?
I sure can. You know what, there's no need around the bush. Last year, we had a lot of problems and a lot of challenges. And I know that your communities and San Bernardino County and those areas were highly affected by it and we know that we could improve it better. And I know for a fact that we are doing that. I think experience of what we dealt with in the past with PSPS was something due to everybody. You know, Southern California has been doing it for nine or ten years plus and for us is one of our first experiences. So, again, we can do better. So, our motto and our goal for 2020 are really to have a smaller size, shorter length, and really have a smarter customer community. That we want to reduce the worst impacted by PSPS. We want to restore the customers that twice as fast after a severe weather has passed. And then we want to provide better information, information that we have learned from. And I want to say that this is not because of some of the PG just decided to do that. We listen. We listen to the stakeholders, we listen to the customers. We intend to improve safety and community safety and customer experience. So, just initiatives, research and life advice. I can't wait to talk about San Juan Batista area. We're starting micro beds, replacing wood lines over ground, more weather technology. We're deploying more PG&E contracted crews. We did have studies in public shit, now we are almost doubling it. We literally expanded the fleet of helicopters to definitely what we used to have from some thirty-something, almost up to sixty-five-something helicopters to inspect our lines. And then we used to get rid of equipment for now, drone use and new airplanes with, if you will, with infrared devices. And then we want to improve on the customers' experience by number one, enhanced Wi-Fi website bandwidth. Everybody's trying to go to the portal and find out, are they impacted, are they not? And it kept on crashing, now with Jexor, Jexor Direct. Us not having a system that was made up to handle thirty-six counties, we improved that. Customer notification process, we improved that. And then community resource centers. We did have one in San Juan Batista, but now we identified three before in San Bernardino County to help everybody. And then working more collectively with Level Eight Chief, County OES, and Fire Chiefs, Police Chiefs, etc. So, here's just an overview of San Bernardino County if you look at the map. First, I want to talk about something we already probably heard about. That's what how we hear the fire threat, if you will, in different areas. This is done by CPUC. You can actually go to the CPUC, go to PG&E website, find this map. This is a combination of California Department of Forest Safety Department, either CalFire, US Forest Service, Bureau of Energy Affairs, CPUC, as well as other independent energy agencies. Tier two, you'll notice the tan and tier three is what we call a stream and it's in red. You'll see that that's, when you look at the map, it's higher up in the right-hand, upper-left-hand corners where we see the tier three. And then as we come down, we're tier two, we're in tier one. Now, you might say, well, those mountains have a lot of brush, trees, everything else like that. Yes, but they not, they don't have exposure lines. They may not have exposure to other threats you can find in a tier two or a tier three area. There are seven hundred seventy-five overall overhead distribution miles in San Bernardino County. Hundred ninety-four, there's total overhead transmission miles. I'll look forward to talking about that. Five substations, twenty-three thousand customers impacted. First, in those are the high fire threat area. And then we have a total of seven hundred baseline customers. Those are customers that have self-identified, subscribing to our services for medical issues, whether they're on oxygen, for other type of medical equipment or medical needs. And then the last is critical facilities, the station parks, sanitation, hospitals, all that. And if you get closer to, you see the fire threat area, you'll notice that San Juan Batista is pretty much in a tier one area. There's not a lot of tier two, tier three. That said, because you're in San Bernardino County, you're impacted by the tier two, tier three area. And we recognize that and we heard you loud and clear. And so, that's how we kind of set our guidance for sexualizing and targeting. Take a look at the progress we made in 2020. You'll notice that we installed in 2019, eight weather stations. We'll show you briefly, two more in progress right now. We have two cameras, we've got two more in progress right now. Community resources are executed in San Juan Batista and we're going to have more coming in 2020. Sexually, sexualizing devices, we installed four in 2019 and we have installed several more. We're at target on that. That's one of the sites we're supporting. And then, of course, the enhanced vegetation management. So, just briefly, those little blue dots are PG&E weather stations that we installed in San Bernardino County. And they're available to look at, review if you go to either pgne.com, or cowest.utah.edu. Yeah, that's pg.com/weather. Yeah, that's really the best one to use. This is for me, it's easy to remember. You actually can look at the weather stations, what they're doing, wind directions, fog, temperatures, humidity, everything else. You'll notice the two orange ones, those are called remote automated weather stations from POTS and those are used by POTS Tube. And we share these weather stations with CalFire and they share their weather stations with us so that we're all looking at bigger picture. That's really our goal is to have one every twenty miles of electrical lines in the high threat area so that we can watch whether, we can predict and we can watch it immediately.
Sir, I asked, I'm asking a question again. Your city councilman, what you think closest, PG&E or CalFire, weather station? You asked your answer in San Juan Batista, where is it located?
Excuse me, Councilman Febreeze. I asked everyone to please wait until the presentation with any questions. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. And it's a great question and I'll be able to come back to it. So, going on to, and here's a important recent one we have weather station. You have five hundred thousand volt lines running through San Bernardino County. The three volts running out of Los, twenty-three thousand volts running from Los, combining a hundred fifteen thousand volts in each space. And this mission line is from Los Landy to through you, San Bernardino County, the Mexican one, San Joaquin County. They're running down to the southern part of the twenty and beyond. And they're also shooting north up into San Aguirre, Santa Clara, counties, et cetera. What happens is because those lines come up and they come over the hills, that's where we expect our highest winds. What happens is we get those wind levels up there in the hills and everybody's going, yeah, down here in San Juan Batista, we don't have any wind. Why are they shutting off our power? And it is directly a result of the high pitch lines, the high power lines are threatened at that time. And so, we have to shut off the transmission lines which have impact. Now, that said, I'm going to show you here shortly how we've been able to even make that smaller impact in San Bernardino County out of that PSPS. The next one is cameras. And we have four cameras installed. They're facing each way. But I do want to share with you that there are third cameras that are facing here. Those from Monterey County, those from San Luis Obispo County, those from coming down from Santa Clara County. And we can see the whole San Bernardino County area. So, we use those high-definition cameras to help us identify winds. We help use those to identify any fires that have started. Not necessarily our fires, but fires that could threaten our systems. So, we're back to be watching twenty-four so.
Thanks, Stu. The community resource centered locations for San Bernardino County. Right now, we are in the process of working out where to put those community resource centers. We had a big goal to make the sites all indoors this year. And we were working hard on that and then COVID hit. And then you have social distancing issues. So, we are working on a myriad of plans to have sites all the way down to what's called a microsite, which is where we have a sprinter van that will come out and help the folks in the community that may be affected by a CRC. We're working closely with our OES manager, Chris Mongano, with the county of San Bernardino, as well as your city manager, Don Montalvo. Last year, we had a CRC in San Juan Batista and we may have that again this year.
So, here's the high flyover on the grid. You can see the red lines, the five hundred thousand, KP are five hundred thousand volts. They're born from, like I said, from Los Landy, on Oakville. We've got the greatest line, which is the two hundred thirty thousand volt lines. So, it's the middle of the county. And then coming around you, we have both the sixty thousand volt and a hundred fifteen K volt, right? Substations are little rectangle, if you will, red rectangles, those are the substations. So, let me kind of break this down. Think of the transmission lines, it's freeways. The substations is winter, the cars are coming off the freeway. And then from the substations, they get out of the distribution lines or the side streets, if that makes sense. The goal, on behalf of shutting things off, is how do we sexualize? This is the big thing, I think, that we've been able to improve through San Bernardino County. We're still working on it. We met our target for 2020 and we'll show you that right now. So, if you look at this map, you can see the guy San Juan Batista highlighted. So, what I want you to think about is all of that blue in there, right? See the little orange dots? Those are what we call sexualizing devices. They can be fuses, they can be the closers. We have a lot of systems that can automatically trip them if we need to or we can put boots on the ground versus a T-nab to come up and fix them. So, if we know that, what we're able to do is sexualize the system. So, what I want you to imagine is, last year, 2019, blue and the purple were all in scope. And that's why parts of San Juan Batista went down, as well by other parts of Hollister City and other parts of San Bernardino County. Now, change that and imagine that all of the blue is no longer in scope. It's just the purple. Do you get the difference? Right? In other words, what was all of that blue was last year and now has been taken out of scope and definitely reduced via button, sexualized distribution lines. So, it's quite an improvement. Look, there's six devices that we literally put in that area to help that up. We have two work devices downstream a little bit to help, you know, prevent that area and should sexualize that area. So, it's not perfect. You know, the purple area has changed, but the blue area has and will allow us to have less impact on city areas of the county. Assistant Harney, we're doing that across seventy-one hundred miles of our high fire threat area as we do it in our normal services. As an example, we're installing stronger and more resilient poles. So, what we're finding is if we have a vehicle hit pole, a vehicle versus an electrical pole, when we replace that pole, we replace it with a stronger, more resilient type pole. We improve the TR, the arc going across, to ensure that it's stronger and the wire that we're using, instead of the bare copper wire or the bare aluminum wire, we're now using coating wire. We're installing more poles that are required to help, again, if you have a lot of sway in a wire, poles will reduce that by putting another pole in place to help reduce that sway, which contributes to wire and when they're taking them down. We're doing more tree, no longer using trees. Members truffles up in Santa Cruz County, hiding now, we're applying wires. You know, our, hiding the trees. And that was the way we did it years and years ago. Adding down guys, neighbors, then of course, replacing lines in the ground where we can. Any new community, we're working, replacing lines in the ground. Trying to be that as obvious as we can and for every reason. Enhanced vegetation, we've got about one mile, this is really only about one mile right now in San Bernardino County that was our target and hit that target. The difference is, think about vegetation management, we're system every single day. It's like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. You start at one end of the bridge and once you get down, paint and rid it down. Our back, we're all over it, right? Same thing with trees, they roll back. So, enhanced vegetation is where we're now going out twelve feet of the, basically, the center of the pool, if you will, on each side and we're going eight feet directly up. Our vegetation management experts, we've got scientists, we've got engineers, we study every tree that comes into a pole, a tree that goes down our wire system. If we study the type of tree, the type of age of the tree, what's it made of? Was it infected? Was it infested? Was it, how old was it? How did it range wide? All of that stuff, we track everything so that we can make good calculated decisions. For example, a dead pine tree, two feet from the wires, two feet from the pole is bad. A living, a redwood tree, two feet from the poles is okay because redwood trees are normally very, very moist trees. So, we don't, we don't, we look at each tree differently, depends on the name of the tree. And when billions of dead trees in the state of California, many of them in San Bernardino, Monterey County, we try to remove those if they have, or near, our lines that could possibly fall on it, branches could break.
Okay, let's talk about, I'm sorry, let's talk about the thirty-year weather analysis. PG&E employs a large meteorological team to look at the weather patterns so that we can help look at these events and help to predict what might be coming. We've amassed thirty years of high-resolution data covering eighty billion data points as well as twenty-six wildfire data in our service area to help determine the average likelihood and frequency of a PSPS event. Some of the data points that are analyzed, you can see on the screen. We're looking at wind speed, wind gusts, temperatures, relative humidity, precipitation, dead fuel moisture. There's four different types. There's live fuel moisture. There's fire weather indexes. It's fun to hear the meteorological staff talk about this. They get very excited about weather. We collaborate with the following agencies that are listed there. CalFire, Sterile Fire Agency, US Forest Service, National Weather Service. San Jose State University has a fire weather research lab. So, it's nice to have that asset that close to us to be able to collaborate with them. Here's a couple of charts, here's a couple of charts about that weather analysis as it pertains to San Bernardino County. So, funny enough, right, that the one event per year on average is what we've seen and that's what we experienced in 2019 and that's likely what may happen in 2020. We'll see how that maps out. Let's talk about event coordination and information sharing. So, the Emergency Operations Center Coordination, we So the Emergency Operations Center Coordination, we coordinate with the local OEC, your county OEC. We have, Stu can go actually into the local OEC and help Chris with any information that she might need from PG&E. That's something that she requests. We have no problem sending in the public safety specialists to offer the counties that type of assistance. We also offer a GIS technical specialist that can help with mapping and polygons and grids. I am also available. I'm the local public affairs representative for the government relations area. So all of the elected officials, I send out information to them. Also to Don as the city manager, to the county, to Reyes Benozas, the CPO. Locally, right at the moment, Jeff Money is your public safety specialist. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to meet him. Please meet with our team. We're excited to have him. Rob Morris is our senior manager for local customer experience and the division lead. He leads the outreach to critical customers and addresses escalated customer issues within our territory. And then we have Katie Allen, and she is our media rep. So if there is, you know, a media person who would like to get more information about something for PG&E, we'll work for them to. Stu, would you like to discuss in event communications?
Absolutely. So one of the things that PG&E did as part of these improvements is we hired additional 16 public safety specialists with the anticipation that we could put a public safety specialist in each county to support local EOCs and local EOC directors, fire chiefs, police chiefs, other boards, et cetera. In doing so, what we will have is two calls. So once we start the D S P S process, what happens is you activate your EOC and we activate ours, we will have two calls a day from me to my team up in the EOC, and then my team out to all of you. So you're getting real time information. We found that our issue was that information wasn't being shared as quickly enough, and we get, and that's what we wanted to improve, store the information, everything. So that's one of the changes to the calls. Then the third call was the system operator's call, operator's call, which is we're just listening in so you understand bigger picture of what's happening, weather, all those type of things are brief, and you'll hear what's happening in other counties within the state. And then last, any updated information, we provide. There'll be emails coming out, you'll have ESS, public safety specialists in your county, working for your county leadership, and so forth, and helping coordinate all of that together to make sure you have real time information. You have people that need access to the portal and can help you get to the portal. You have access to information in different ways. You might hear the guys hearing that information right. So let's talk just mainly about the agency portal. I encourage all of you to sign up for the portal. It's pgne.com/pspsportal. Everybody should get access to the portal. And there's a couple reasons why. Number one, before an event, there's plenty of planning maps in there. There's summary of potential impact customers, to list the critical customers. And then there's little lists of baseline customers. Now, not everybody can access the baseline and the critical customers. That's a security function, but it is identifying. Or others, in other words, a resident couldn't assume their location based on the baseline. Has to be somebody, a government official. But then specific information during events, such as the maps, PDF, K I S, they can lay over there by your mapping systems. We activated the CRCs. We'll go ahead and give you the affected customers, and we'll begin making baseline customers, and you'll have a list of who those customers are. We've improved our systems so that you have what's called a watch and then a warning. So in a watch, that is where we are letting people know that this is what we're watching. If you're a weather PG&E may turn on power for safety, and we'll give them their street address and their home address, and we'll tell them the estimated shut off time. And it'll tell them the estimated restoration time. That's new for us, right? Because we've been able to find to this, look, hey, this is where we're seeing the weather event, so this is where we're going to shut it off. And then we know that it's potentially 12 hours, you know, our goal is 12 hours, right? To restore anything, you know, and on, it could come on sooner, but we always try to let them know now when it's going to come on. This can come out on an email, it can come out on a phone, it can come out on a text. Then we go to a warning. And the warning occurs is more specific. PG&E, D S P S, Alge Alert, prevention of power for safety at 1234, maybe where it's at. Estimated shut off time is between this and this, or later if one of our crews. Estimated restoration time is this, and hey, you're on the button. Now, the key to this is, our goal is to notify the OES, notify fire, PD, sanitation, council members, board supervisors, COs, and anybody that is on that list, we have 72 hours. And you can get the high level notification as soon as we start experiencing a potential, even before a watch is given. We're going to notify you to let you know that this is an effect, so you can effectively plan and prepare. We will notify the customers, our best intent is notifying the customers 48 hours in advance, 24 hours in advance, and right before we shut the power off. And then, right before we turn the power on, we will notify them again. So our improving the customer experience in terms of notifications, more standard notification, more standard to the address, not just D S P S area, you know, hang on tight, power's on. It's just, it's more specific to the address. Now, the reason why it's so important when we talk about the web improvements, portal, portal improvements, D S portal. Take a look at that right now. Is, again, we want to be moving, we moved everything to the top so that it's more automatically redirecting. It's kind of got an all in one map, and it's developed a lower bandwidth option so smart phone users can have that, can have access to it. We don't have map yet, but I'm sure that's something that we developed. We have similar language and layouts, so it's easier for everybody to understand. And then we can upload information faster and make sure it's multi-people and translated content, so we can do that, including ADA accessibility. But when we look at the mapping portal, like last year, when you look at the gray section of the map, they could go, oh, it's just this buffer area. You'd be like, well, is my power going to go off? Is my power not going to go off? I don't know, right? But we couldn't really tell you. Now, what we're done with our map is we've got it to a parcel level. That's the 10th level. So we can literally get down to the address where that's going to be shut off. So somebody put their address in the portal, and it will tell them, yes, we're going to have your power shut off, or no, we're not going to have your power shut off. So we've really improved the portal, and again, everybody should get on that portal. And you know, turn over the resources to the CRC.
Okay, so talking about the community resource centers, these are some of the materials that we will be supplying in these centers when we get them set up. Heating and or cooling, it depends on the time of year and what's going on with the weather. Device charging, bottled water, non-perishable snacks, white ice service, tables and chairs. We'll have security personnel there. We'll have ADA compliant restaurants and hand washing stations. We may give out blankets if necessary. Then, you know, may have coffee or tea there. Due to the COVID considerations, we will be adhering to all of the county and or city requirements for COVID. So if, you know, if a city or a county has an order in place that says, you know, you cannot have more than 10 people gathered, we'll set up the CRC accordingly and make sure. We also have the ability to change the size and scope of the CRC depending upon what's going on and what the current requirements of the county or city are. And I monitor them now on a weekly basis. So that if we were to have a call of an event tomorrow, we would know exactly what the requirements are so that we can make sure that we're adhering to all of the safety requirements that are necessary. We'll do the facial covering, the temperature checks, limiting the attendance, sanitizing all the surfaces. So it's really caused us to become very flexible with what those may look like depending upon the conditions that we're in at the time the event is called. So another thing that we're doing is we're providing additional support for people with disabilities and or older adults. PG&E is working with California Foundation for Independent Living to fund resources to help prepare for disaster disasters and extended power allergies. We would very much encourage anyone that you may know that might need to take advantage of some of these services to contact the CFLIC now and get a plan set up before there's an event. You know, events can be very stressful, and folks need extra help with things. So PG&E, again, has coordinated with this organization to help provide that service for the people who need it. You can go to their website, cflic.org, or disabilitydisasteraccess.org. If you have any questions about that, we'd be happy to connect you with the customer team on that. Okay, sharing the message and next steps. You can help your community take steps to prepare. What can you do? You can sign up at pgne.com/mindfirealerts. We can notify you if, you know, things are coming your way. We very much encourage all of our customers and non-customers to sign up. You can get zip code alerts. There's really a lot of ways to help us help you get information about what we have going on. So medical baseline program right now, if you know anybody who may need that program, we've made it even easier for customers to sign up for that. We have information available on our website, pgne.com/medicalbaselineforthat. You know, we have an extensive media team that is getting messages out through newsletters, websites, social media. Katie Allen is the local contact for that. And, you know, we want to know about other outreach opportunities and ways that we can partner to come to cities and counties like we're doing today to help spread the word about our community wildfire safety program. And looks like they, the electric grid overview, Stu, what do we?
No, we did, we had a couple of staff that we need to discuss. This is their.
Perfect. I agree.
So, yeah, I'm sure there's lots of questions. And I do want to jump to that first question about the weather station near San Juan Batista and San Juan Rey. There's a weather station on San Juan Rey there, and then there's a couple of part of the north, one in one Rey County, this one in Bee's Ranch. And if you have ideas for weather stations, please, please reach out and tell us. We're always looking for places where we can put weather stations and where we can put cameras. So if you have ideas where we can put those things, you can put the work with us and, you know, get that done, we're here all, so I share that with you.
Thank you, this is Derek Reeser, I was wanting to ask a question. Two things, first, where on San Juan Rey? Do you know?
You know, sir, I don't, all I can tell you, it's on a pole up there. I don't even consider it, it's on pole, but I really couldn't tell you which pole it is.
Okay. All right. And then you mentioned in your presentation something about CAL FIRE and weather stations also sharing information. Do you know where their weather stations are located?
Specifically, all I can tell you is they're up in the hills, but I can't give you a fixed GPS orbit or anything else like that. But I'm going to give you my phone number right now, and we can go online on that, if that's all right.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
It's 831.
Hold on. 831, that's, that's a good start.
Yeah, 521.
All right.
3267.
Okay, great.
My name's Stu, S Q, I mean, Mike, Steve.
You asked if we ever had this input on Fox for future weather stations. I can tell you that we here in San Juan Batista view that what we call the San Juan Canyon has been super, super vulnerable to wildfires and things like that. So the grid, not so much because it's not as inhabited as the San Juan Canyon is. So my, I don't know what my fellow council members think, but my thought would be if you could install a weather station somewhere in the canyon, not Fremont Peak maybe, but not as high as that, but somewhere in the San Juan Canyon. If that canyon tonight's on fire, it's going to be a climate, CNN won't be great. And I think we all need to prepare for that.
Appreciate that comment. And we actually do have weather station cameras up on Fremont Peak, but like I said, we were looking for areas in San Vito County so we could bring it down. If that's an area of concern, let's get together on this conversation and we'll begin the process.
Thank you, Stu, I appreciate that, I appreciate that response. It is an area of concern. And the main area of concern is there's one way in and one way out. I mean, there's some fire trials and stuff that people can use to lead a big fire in the canyon. But if that thing goes, goes up like a tunnel of flames and fire and heat, it's going to be tough because there's only one road up and then one road out. So we're always historically have been very concerned about the canyon. What's, what'll we do with that?
Okay, I'd like to open it up for the other council members. So Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I appreciate you guys bringing this to us. I was on the presentation a couple of weeks ago, and y'all really do geek it out over this, which is, which is a good thing. Yeah, thank you for the presentation I'm bringing it to.
And if I could just add something, like, and it's, I want to make sure that we're clear that a P S, public safety power shutdown is something that we really reserve as a last, you know, last minute kind of thing. It's not something that we want to do. But differ that from what's called a woolly blackout, which we've been experiencing over the last Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. PG&E controls public safety power shutdowns are done by California independent system operators. And they basically tell us, we need to cut this much power, we got 10 minutes to do it, and you decide on the systems. So with that knowledge now, we got better over that. And so, you know, again, we did not have to do it on Sunday. I don't know if we got it on Saturday, like we down here in Purple Valley. So, but there's a difference. And some people, and that was what was out there in the press was, oh, they're going to have a public safety power shutdown, we need a lot of it was woolly blackout.
And I'd like to clarify even further, we do not have any choice over where they do what's called the load shedding, CAISO, or the California independent state operator makes that determination.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lotis, do you have any questions or comments?
Oh, questions, thanks for everyone, Tina and Stu for your presentation.
Councilman Freeman, do you have any, anything to add?
Yes, I'd also like to thank Stuart and Jennifer for their excellent presentation. And I'd like to ask, we have two new subdivisions of town, and their, their electrical wiring is underground, and it was planned that way. I was wondering if they were planning on helping us ground the facilities on maybe the rest of the town, or some of the town, parts of the town.
Well, that's a, that's a fun question to answer. And you know what, we're always looking at opportunities. I'm going to put it out there, we look at market opportunities, we look at opportunities for undergrounding. There's several things about undergrounding. When we do new developments, it's so much easier. When we do new developments, it's so much easier because it's put in, it's factored into the development. When we started undergrounding wires that were above ground, it's so much more costly and we deal with a lot more environmental issues when we started putting it in. And so, you know, what they say is it's about, it's anywhere from maybe the seven times what it is above ground to do underground for a mile. So we work collaboratively with cities, and if that's something that's interested, I would encourage you to look up, have Gina, and see what discussions we can start there. See if there's, to give a look at share costs or something like that, so that, you know, we can start that dialogue. It's, it's a long process, but anyway, if you don't start it, you never start. So let's, let's, let's get it going.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And one last quick question. A block of microgrid, have you ever thought about San Juan, the east of the, with that facility, we have a San Juan piece of it always, we have perfect microgrid, but.
And you are absolutely right. Where we have focused the microgrids right now is in our tier two, tier three areas. But again, we're also now starting to look at searches for tier one areas such as yourselves because it does make sense in here. We're going to have to cut, cut those powers, why not leave the whole operation over? And to sectionize the devices, it's worth a time around, we're making a big imprint on changing what you experience. And then as we continue to do that under specifying, we'll be able to reduce even more. And the discussion grid is absolutely potential, or, you know, generation of substation, that's another alternative that we look at. We have to work with all of you council, if we have substations, say, for example, in the Tempe, Batista area, right in your city, then we have to look, it's like, can we take another, you know, five hundred square feet of land so then we can install raker systems, install system, so that if we don't have PSPS going, that generation system, just, that doesn't work right out of that substation. So those are all discussions and dialogues we can have together to locate them. Again, it's important.
One last quick question. We do have a substation, it's a wild half of town right next to Erdmount Farms or Taylor Farms now. And so I just wanted to throw that out there, it was built, I believe, in 2006, 2007, so the apparently water substation. And I've also heard that, that a hard interest structure here in San Juan is, you know, fifty, sixty years old, or maybe a hundred and twenty years old, and, and they get transformers are not up to the capabilities of people needing more and more power, you know, where people are buying electric cars, and air conditioning, and all these things take a lot of electricity, it's probably not better than it. And I'm starting to think that we get some of our infrastructure transformers must upgrade.
You know, again, great, great discussion. I, I posted my name and my number, and even though it's right in chat, everybody, so that we can have that discussion. I think it's a great discussion. Sir, it would help you say that you have stuff that goes back, yeah, fifty, sixty, seventy years. I mean, when you really think about the system, sixty years ago, it was a really good system. And it was installed where there weren't a lot of homes, it was installed where we didn't have urban interface, it was installed in areas because it was trying to bring the quickest way to bring electricity to cities. Over time, that's changed. Over time, the climate's changed. And so with higher winds, predominantly what we call full winds, very much like Santa Ana's where it's blowing east to west, it's west to east, those are high experience PSPS winds because that's where we're most concerned. Dry winds, they dry the brush, they dry the browse, and have the ability, because of the falling and, and speed of the winds, to damage our weather. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Good day, sir.
So Jenna and Stu, thank you so much for a great presentation. And I would like to just encourage those of you, those council members who have asked the right questions. Stu has been kind enough to give us his phone number, so if we have something that we want to work on, let's contact him and, you know, give him a call and, and start working with him. So do we have any questions or comments from the, the public? Okay, good. Thank you.
Oh, hi. I'm sorry, I travel in late. I would just like to second Mr. Freeman's suggestion that we under the ground, or until anyone's, they were undergrounded in our historic district many, many years ago. I believe Rebecca McGovern was the one behind that effort. And I would like to work with John to see what else we can do to get the rest of our historic camp undergrounded, because they're really ugly.
Okay. They're going to stay here. I say the same.
Okay, thank you. That was my comment.
Okay. Thank you, Kara. Anyone else? If not, then we'll go ahead and go on. And again, thank you, Stu and Jenna, and I look forward to calling you. We'll go on to item four C, monthly financial statements.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to get my screen back. Yeah, you, you, you. Hold on, I'm just trying to get my screen back. There we go. Here, okay, there we go. All right. There we go. Okay, financials. The report before you tonight is unusual in that it is the year end. It indicates for the city council where we stood June 30th, when our fiscal year ended. And just looking at the top line of the front page, you'll notice the general fund reached ninety-one percent of its budget estimate. And you may recall, as a result of the pandemic, we met in April, and we made some important cuts to our budget. And if you just flip the page and look at the top of the next page, you'll see that we spent eighty-nine percent of what we budgeted. So I think our city came out a whopping two percent ahead, but it leaves me out behind. So, so the good news is we're stable moving forward. Those are really smart decisions that we made in April, and moving forward, that's where we are. So a lot of these revenues did come out higher than anticipated, which is really great news. A lot of them are tied to specific funds, specific pots of money. On the expense side, most of them came in right about a hundred percent, which is pretty good. Community development is just a little bit high. We made some adjustments there, we should be leveling out. The affordable housing fund, as reported all year long, was high as a result of the two housing elements approved the last fiscal year. So the, so with that, I think it's a, it's a pretty good report that shows us where we're heading into our new fiscal year in pretty good shape and balanced shape. Is there any of the specific checks that were cut that anyone has any questions or anything else about the financial statement? I'm happy to reply.
Okay. So Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any questions regarding the financials? Okay. Councilman Flodas, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm sure you have one.
Okay. Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions or comments?
Only thank you, Don, for keeping us in budget. That's kind of a really great thing this year, with all the excitement we have.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman De Vries, do you have any comments or questions for our city manager?
No, I would, I would second Councilmember Freeman's comments that there's a huge commendation to be instilled on Don Reynolds, he's dealing with all this stuff. It's a tough, tough time, and he's doing a great job.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say thank you so much for, for all your hard work.
Sure. I have fun doing this, believe it or not.
Okay, great. I'm glad you have fun doing it.
You're a masochist.
Well, that was on the job description, right?
Yeah.
No, 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 it's a pleasure serving, pleasure serving the city, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any public comment on our financials? If, if we don't, we'll go on to item D, four D, city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I want to apologize, not my chance to be bad. I did not get a written report to you this, this month. Because I am proud of one thing this past month, I've been disciplining myself in my calendar, and I've been reserving two-hour blocks to work on our budget. We've extended it to the council meeting in September, and we want to give the community time to review it. Having said that, there's not a lot to review, there's not a lot new coming into the budget. But we have made it through a big portion of the operations budget. Spent four hours with Public Works in the last two days, and I think we have all of their six divisions all wrapped up now, ready to move forward. There are no raises planned for employees, no across-the-board increases as we've had in the past year, but the prior interim city manager did inject into it the opportunity for merit increases. And some of our employees, when they get their review for meeting standards, they are getting a five percent increase. So, so there is still opportunity for growth there, but within the confines of the merit system, we're not looking at any cost of living catch-up raises. The lot of cities, Santa Cruz, for example, is taking a, the county board of supervisors in Santa Cruz is taking a ten percent cut. So a lot of, a lot of the local governments are making cuts in that regard right now. And we're already to hold our own. The sales tax was unknown in April when we talked about it, but that's our lifeblood. We're projecting it in our budget coming forward to you at about fifty-four percent of normal. So that's still a really big hit for us, and so there is a lot of caution. In, in my original thought, I was, I was hoping that our budget would show an increase in our community development. The prior city manager had left me with the option of a deputy city manager, and I hired a code enforcement officer. But we also hired Carl Bajarki in Public Works, and we need that kind of help in our community development because we have so many exciting things coming forward. Just because our budget is status quo, I noted for the council, we've received close to $600,000 in different planning grants. In addition to that, the council's top priority is the urban growth boundary project, which we'll talk about later in the agenda. We have a, a specific plan for the Alameda, we have a, a walking trail system that, that's on your agenda tonight, a $200,000 grant. We have the opportunity to use.
Mute that alone.
Somebody needs to mute themselves.
Anyway, we have these ADU updates for our ADU codes and our inclusionary housing. So I, rather than put forth a senior planner position, which would cost more than, than the planner that we had, I've got an opportunity to hire a, a planning director who's currently unemployed at about $50 an hour and 20 hours a week, to help us tie all these grants and different projects together. So we'll keep to services of Harrison Associates. Their expertise on their projects, I think, has been proven, especially on seque and environmental quality. But we will have some help starting soon to help tie our, our specific plan, our SB2 grant, together with the urban growth boundary, and then help work on some of our local ordinances and policies that all need to be updated, all exposed as a result of the housing element update. So I just wanted to share that with you. Her name is Marty, and I'll be introducing her next week, I hope. With that, today, we did put a task force together to focus on emergency power. We had applied for some grants last year, they did not come through. We analyzed what our systems look like, know that, know for sure that we have sufficient water for two days should the power go down, and that we could find the necessary generator. We have two generators, one in our wastewater treatment plant and another on, on a trailer. But we're looking, we have budgeted for generators, and so now I put a task force together today, and we're focusing on moving ahead. The city engineer is going to take the lead on that and work with our fleet and other folks so that we can address that situation sooner than later. Hopefully, we'll be coming forward with a, with a contract to buy those generators while the city engineer is working on transfer switches for our various substations, et cetera. So that's it in a nutshell. There's a lot of odds and ends, of course, every week, but that's the focus that I've had lately, is, is the budget and getting our grant programs rolling. So, that's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any questions for our city manager? Councilman Flodas, do you have any questions?
Okay, so we'll go on, we'll go back to Councilman Flodas. Councilman De Vries, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I do. A simple one. Don, have you thought about any potential role that David Matt might be able to buy to the city going forward?
Well, yes, of course. And I think we should retain his services, but as a consultant, he's a lot more expensive than having a, a planning director who's unemployed currently come in and help out for $50 an hour. So we talked about this in depth before I called this individual, and he greatly supports it. He is the current planner for us, and he's best on the front end, and he's gone to speed on the urban growth boundary and, and really well, and we're grateful for that. We don't want to get rid of that experience and knowledge that he has. So I think the two of them will work together. For example, when we spoke in our ad hoc committee meeting, our first one on Monday, there was a task to go to the, the county and get all the parcel data and stuff like that. That's the kind of thing this planner can help us do for $50 an hour instead of asking David to do it for 150 an hour. So I think there's a, a potential there, and it's also temporary. So if, if our sales tax don't recover, then, then a part-time person can be let go a lot simpler than a full-time person, and it's a lot less of a commitment. So having said that, she's going to continue to apply for jobs and seek to fly the coop any minute. But we want to keep David on board. I don't know, I get this sense of dedication from him, and he seems to enjoy working for us, and it's been a good thing. I hope you agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So.
Go on.
I'm not, I'm not finished yet, Matt, no. So, Don, you're saying that this, this woman that would come on board, should she be a W-2 employee to the city?
She would be an employee in the city on a part-time base, part-time temporary basis, at, at 20 hours or less a week.
Okay. And what would her title be?
Oh, I don't know, maybe project manager, like Carl Bajarki is a project manager. So she would, she'd really be managing these grants for us.
But also assisting in overall planning?
Just the advanced planning, not the day-to-day planning, but yeah, the idea is a cost savings, and, and David was, was great with that. He was okay with that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. I'll, I'll show her resume tomorrow with the city council, so you can see it.
Okay.
Yeah, if anyone else you have any questions. Thank you.
So I see, Councilman Flodas, you're back. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, no questions.
Okay.
No comments.
All right. Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions or comments?
I got Freeman's internet connection.
And stability. Okay.
Okay.
Yes?
Did you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I still have some comments. Yeah, so Mayor, I'd like to back up what Dan Rees just said, and let's really think about David Matt. He, I think he just does a really good job.
Yes.
I can use him for a lot of things. We'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Okay, and I agree. So, Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any questions or comments?
Fortunately, we still retain David Mack. Uh, no, I don't, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, we will. He'll stay on.
Exactly, that's what, yeah, that's what I just said, fortunately, we do.
Right. Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, do we have any questions or comments from our public? Okay, so, it, it doesn't look as though we have any questions or comments from the public. So we're going to go on to item 4E, Reports from the City Council Appointees to Regional Organizations and Committees. So, Councilman Fuentes, do you have any, anything to report?
He keeps, he keeps, the internet connection was not stable, so.
Oh, okay.
We're going to go through.
All right. So, Councilman DeVries, do you have anything to report?
Well, I have, I have quite a lot to report regarding the Urban Growth Boundary Committee meeting last night. But I don't know if you want to do that now, or I saw a slide on that, so maybe that's a thing to add.
Yeah, we can talk about it, as we talk about appointing a, an at-large committee. I, I was, I was wondering about that myself.
Okay, so, so, we'll, we'll talk about it later.
Yeah, we do Urban Growth.
Okay, and so, Councilman Freeman, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Anyway, a couple, a month or two ago, Stephen Shane of Salinas asked me to join him on the National Marine Sanctuary Committee. It's run through AMBAC, which I'm on the Governors Committee. And so, I attended my first meeting, I think, the last Friday in August, I can't remember the date. Anyway, uh, as you probably know, San Juan's about 18 to 20 miles from the beach, and so, I, I really don't know what's happening over there that much. But apparently soil erosion is a real problem, and they, they got arguments over whether dredge material, harbor of Santa Cruz and Moss Landing can be used to fill in beaches in Carmel and Monterey and Wausauville. I just let them argue about that themselves. But, you know, I'm, I'm not, San Juan's not on the beach, so I just kind of stayed out and let those people go with it. Uh, next thing, we did have a Monterey Bay Community Power meeting for the Governors Committee a couple weeks ago. And the big thing I want to remind everybody is, is on September 4th, we changed our name to Central Coast Community Power. And that's really important, so it'll be Central Coast Community Power. And follow-up on the PG&E report, I got an email yesterday from our power company person, and right now, people like PG&E and other utility providers are paying $0.35 an hour per kilowatt-hours for electricity, and you have to sell it at $14. And, which might be a real life, PG&E's contracts are just paying out bankrupts and gum. And I'd like to say that Central Coast Community Power, we buy our electricity for about $0.70 a hour. So we are doing very well, and we have further enough to provide the load for this area. But the highest vote is still Sheldon Zampa, anyway. That's yours, sir. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Sessa? Sessa, were you, did you have anything to say or need, anything to report?
Uh, well, I've been meeting the literature council, and also provide peers out of Monterey County, and we're included in there as well, so I don't have any specifics, but I've been meeting those people, trying to out-appear.
Okay, tha- thank you, Sessa. So, Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have anything to report?
Two, thank you. Uh, I had a meeting two weeks ago with the Water Resources Association, and one of the big things that came out of that meeting was the green business program. Our folks are still working towards that. Utopia and Southern Lake San Juan are two of the newest businesses that are, that have gone through the Water Resources Agency and have passed that. They have one more hoop to go through, and hopefully they'll get their little green sander.
Hmm, good, thank you. And then, we had a special meeting for COG, and there was a presentation for a value analysis report for State Route 25, the expressway, and the widening of Highway 25. It was an extensive report, and so, we all kind of decided that we needed more time to, to review it and study it, so, before we can make any kind of decision. And then, our next meeting is Thursday, so, anyway, so that's our regular meeting. And then, tomorrow morning, I have the, the Area Agency on Aging, that's tomorrow. So anyway, that's all I have to report.
All right.
Okay, so, we go on to number five, we have action items. So, we view applications of select residents to serve on Urban Growth Boundary Committee. Have we had anybody? I know that Cora withdrew her application.
No, we've had no new applications, and Cara Bonk has withdrawn her application, and Cora is on the phone tonight. But this is also an opportunity to talk about a meeting last night, if you and Councilmember DeVries would like to chat about that as well, so.
Well, I would love to, but I had technical difficulties, so I didn't hear everything that, that was said, so.
I have good notes, so does Dan.
And what was that?
I have good notes, so does Dan.
Good, so go ahead and, and report.
Go ahead, Dan, you wanted to report on the, on the, because we didn't talk about this topic at, at last night's ad hoc committee meeting. So why don't you, why don't you get us started, Dan?
You mean substantively or procedurally, in terms of the missing at-large member? Why don't I start with substantively?
There you go.
Yeah, and then we can talk about at-large.
I agree.
Or public, uh, space that's available. So substantively, um, through the guidance of our city manager and David Mack, we were trying to get our focus on what the scope of work is to be done. Uh, because our city is in need of two things. One is a sphere of influence that is adopted by LFO, but we have a sphere of influence, because, I'll just remind everyone, we don't have one right now, because the paperwork, it, it turned down, or maybe the general plan. So, and then, the second thing is to the Urban Growth Boundary. So the question that David Mack and Don Reynolds had to our committee was, do you want us to do both at the same time, do one first, the other second? I mean, how is this all going to work? And those scoping questions are important, especially as regards to budget. Because if David Mack and Harris do not need to do a sphere of influence, then the price goes down. If they have to do sphere and UGB, then the price is different. So that was, and, and then we also wanted, we just wanted clarity, is what are we doing here exactly? So the question was posed, all right, as to the sphere of influence that was proposed in the current general plan, is everybody okay with that? And if we are, then it's just a matter of turning in the paperwork, getting it approved, stamped, boom, done. We don't have to deal a whole lot of work in that department. So we spent, I would say, I don't know if you'd read, Don, but I, I'd say we spent the majority of the time talking about that issue, about whether the sphere of influence as depicted in the general plan that exists today for San Juan Batista meets with our approval. And we did a straw poll, and everyone on the committee said no. Everyone on the committee said that that sphere of influence seemed to be too big, too much, and therefore needs to be adjusted. Okay, well, that wasn't consensus, and I, I, I voted in that direction myself, just for informational purposes. And so if that's true, then the first item of business needs to be adjusting the sphere of influence line as currently depicted in the general plan. Before we even get to Urban Growth Boundary, that seemed to be the first item of business. So what the committee concluded was that it would make a lot of sense for David Mack, Harris, and Don Reynolds, our city manager, to get it together and come up with what they think would be a suitable sphere of influence line for us. Not as broad or as far-reaching as the current one, but something less than that, more constrained and constricted than that. And that made sense to me, because when you're talking about sphere of influence, you're talking about really one, one thing, which is where can a city provide sewer and water? That, where a city can provide sewer and water, that is the sphere of influence. So it's really kind of a capability, uh, Don, it's not just like capacity, but capability. What, what can we, as a city of San Juan Batista, what can we provide in terms of sewer and water? And I think everyone would agree that as of today, August 2020, we're kind of a little bit hamstrung right now in providing sewer or water. So it makes sense to kind of restrict that, rather than expand it, kind of a small area. So since Don Reynolds knows more than anybody about what the city's capability is to provide sewer and water, and since David Mack is a real expert in drawing these things up, we kind of left it in their lap. We pointed to them to come back to the committee in two weeks, August 31st, we're going to have another meeting. And at that time, we hope to get Don, David's ideas, and revise, and revise the sphere of influence line. And then, and then once we get that, wanting to focus, and that looks good and so forth, we'll bring that to the public. And then, and then looking down the road, once the whole thing, the whole sphere of influence item, not only is it focused, but it's reported to council, and, and the public, and everyone agrees with it, and that approved, then, in terms of the Urban Growth Boundary. So, I think the committee, and I certainly agree with this myself as a member of the committee, sees this as a one, two process, one step, two step process. The first being defining, coming up with a defined and new script, coming up with a defined and new script of influence line. And then, once that's done, then turn into the issue of Urban Boundary. Mary and Don, do you think that I stated that correctly?
Yes, yes, thank you for the report, very good report, Dan.
Yeah, that was great. And we had Chair Scott Reels present for the planning commission, and Louis Pachain, also the chair of the HRB, so I thought we had a really positive, uh, meeting.
That's right, that's right. And then, and then procedurally, sorry, I put that aside for a second. Yeah, so, Ms. Tara Monk threw her application to be the public member, and I don't know if Tara's on the call right now, but I'll, I'll say that I was sad to hear that, because I thought she'd be a very valuable member to that. And so we're on the, we're on the hunt for someone that can take her place. And we have some ideas, but that's, that's where that sits right now.
And, and hopefully, within the next week, we can get a couple of people, I don't know, somebody applying.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you, but, oh, Mary, can you repeat that?
I said, hopefully, within the week, we can get a couple of applicants, or one, at least one.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, okay.
That helps, sir.
Thank you, Dan. All right, so, did you want to add anything to this, Don?
No, we, we have a, this public notice that's in your packet tonight is posted at the library post office in the City Hall. We've had it on social media more than once, we'll be, we'll continue to promote it in the, in that regard. Just call City Hall, and, and Trish Pest can give to your application, give a letter in, that we can share with the rest of you, that would be great.
Yeah, great. So, do, Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any questions or comments?
I, I do not, thank you very much, thanks for the progress on this.
Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate your explanations of, of all of this, thank you.
We're off to the west side, truly.
Councilman Fuentes, do you have any questions or comments?
Sessa, can you hear us?
Okay, we'll go back to him.
He's left in an eye a couple of times, he's had a technical difficulty.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, Councilman Freeman, do you have any question or comment?
Uh, no, only thank you to Dan, he's doing a great job on this project, and it's well worth it.
Okay, thank you. So, Council, Councilman Fuentes, can you hear us yet? Okay, we're just going to go ahead.
Please pick her up, please pick her up, there's no questions.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you. So, we, I, we need a motion?
To keep up with it?
To, to keep up with this ad hoc committee?
Oh, I for sure made a motion to keep going with this ad hoc committee, and hopefully, one of our locals will step up and put an application in tomorrow.
Okay, good. So, do we have a second?
Do we really need a motion, Adam?
No, no.
It's an action item?
You don't need to make the call.
Well, it's under action item.
That is, why did it? That was to approve somebody, and that's not what happened.
Then there's somebody who's through, so we're just going to table this for the next meeting.
Well, then we're just going to table this and go on.
For the next meeting, yeah, that's fine.
So now we're going to go on to 5B, Approve Resolution 2020XX, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Applied Survey Research to conduct a household income survey.
So, so Mayor, thank you for introducing this report. It's my recommendation that we extend this consideration to our next meeting, which will, if the council agrees, would be a special meeting on the 25th, next Tuesday. And, and for this reason, and I'll explain to the general public, the Water Board came to us earlier in the year and, and had determined, based on census data, that we were no longer eligible for special consideration of, of working on a compliance project as a disadvantaged community. And that was based on the fact that our unemployment rate had gone down to 3.5%. But as a result of the COVID, the unemployment rate shot up to 12% in April, and then down to 8%, and back up to 9.5%. As of July 17th, that's the last time the data was released, we were very close to being at that 10% again. I was hoping that the numbers for unemployment would be released by April, August 17th, but they weren't. They haven't been updated since August 3rd. So I reached out to the Water Board and said, gee, gee, um, we could do the survey of our residents, a survey of household income, we have 743 residential clients. The Water Board wants us to interview 60% of our residents, or 445 of our community members of our households, to see if their income is at or below the median income of the county. of our households to see if their income is at or below the median income of the county. And knowing that, that the problem is that the census data that Water Board used to determine our eligibility in this criteria is based on potentially data from outside the city limits because our city is crisscrossed by two different census blocks. So some mathematical formula needs to be applied to come to a comfort zone that certain folks are within our city, aren't within our city. Most of the homes outside our city are expensive homes. It would cause that number to skew upward. So I argued in a letter and they agreed that we should be able to conduct our own survey of just our residents to demonstrate that more than half of our residents earned below the median income. For a family of four, the median income in San Benito County is $89,000. So I, just after working on the housing elements and other things, my intuition tells me that we'll qualify. But that's the arduous, arduous and expensive way to do it. And so I got the Water Board to stand off for one week till next Tuesday to see if those July numbers can justify us qualifying again as a disadvantaged community. And that's to our benefit because any penalties that they may impose upon us from past violations could then be applied toward the compliance project. And that's our ultimate goal, is to put our money into our own systems to make them better. So that's the intent. We didn't know that we would be, this is actually in a good position to be in, that we have a less expensive option than opting with this. So just ask that we postpone this professional services contract till next Tuesday and move forward from there.
Okay, all right. So Councilman De Vries, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions?
Hi. Oh, I didn't hear my name, I'm sorry. Let's just go for it.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any comments, questions?
So I think we should hold on.
Yeah. Councilman Flores, are you back? Okay, so we'll just go on, do we have any comments from the public?
Oh, there's, I just asked the committee.
Huh?
There's Sessa, I asked the committee.
Okay.
Ask him again, Sessa.
Says something, typed in the chat that he doesn't have anything.
Okay.
No questions or comments.
Okay, they're quiet, they're quiet.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Leslie. Any comments from the public?
Carl, yeah?
Go ahead.
Have you assessed the median income? Can you go around and ask other person with the median incomes? How do you do that? I'm just curious.
So, sure, I can answer that, although we're not supposed to know. The recommendation in this report is to hire a company called Applied Survey Research. And Applied Survey Research has been doing census-type surveys for various communities or nonprofit. They're based in Watsonville and they have an office in San Jose. This is the same firm that does the biannual census, homeless census, every January, every other January. So they're very experienced and they're very excited about working with us, they know our community well. So they're a qualified consultant, a very professional statistically database firm that has done this in the past. So yes, it requires mailing, calling and following up with at least 450 to 500 of our residents to ask them how many are in their family and what is the family household income. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Do you have another question, Carl? Your hand's still up.
She's probably done. Yeah, she's done, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, so if not, we'll go on, we're going to table this.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not voting.
We need a motion to table this?
I guess I could.
Sure, that would be great, that would be great.
Yeah, make the motion to table it, please.
All right, I make a motion that we table authorizing this city manager to execute a professional services agreement until we hear about the survey this week. Hold it off till next week.
Do we have a second?
So, America, Joe Biden is fighting for it now.
Do we have a second?
Cara Bong just raised her hand again. Dan seconded it, Mayor.
Okay, all right, did you get that?
I didn't hear.
I'm trying to lower my hand, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, so Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Okay, I just lowered, I'll lower it for you, Cara.
Can you ask Dan De Vries to repeat the second?
No, it wasn't Dan, I think it wasn't John, oh, was it Dan? I thought she's.
That's, we have.
Can the, can the second, please be repeated? We didn't hear who seconded the motion.
Mary, I seconded the motion.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Right.
All right, so we need a vote. Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Oh, he says yes.
Give him a second, he's typing.
And the chat is recorded when we save the meeting.
Start it again.
Maybe he should put a sign up.
Yes.
Can you repeat it?
Councilmember Flores?
I have an unstable internet connection network, what is the question?
We were.
Can you repeat the question?
It was a motion to table the survey until next, next week, right?
Yes.
He said yes.
Okay.
He said a thumbs up.
Thank you, he said yes.
Can he, can he type it in? I mean.
He didn't, he's in the chat.
Where is it in the chat? Because I have the chat here, I don't see it. And then he says, I guess he gave a thumbs up. Did you see it?
I can, I can see him now.
Okay.
So I guess. Councilmember Flores?
He did.
He did, okay.
Yes, he said yes.
Okay. Well, can he, he needs to communicate that to me.
It's a private chat, I'm sorry, he's chatting with me, we're talking secondhand.
Okay, so he needs to communicate that to our city clerk.
I'll just say everyone.
So either in the, the community chat or if you can do it digitally.
In the community chat?
All right, hold on. There we go.
I can't even get a visual on it.
Yeah. So Liz, is he, can he do something so that?
I think he, I think he froze again.
So, okay, let's save him to the last. Councilman Freeman, did we call on you already?
No, you have not, and I say yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
So is that it, all of us except for Sessa? There he is.
I copied and pasted, oh, there he is, to everyone, yes.
Can you see it, Laura? Yeah, okay, all right, good.
He typed his, he texted answer, Mayor.
Okay.
There he is.
Thank you, all right.
So, a picture visual, yes, yes.
Yes. He looks down, okay. But she says she heard it or saw.
Okay.
Acknowledged.
Okay, all right.
So now?
On to the next one. Okay, 5C, ready?
All right, well, I was waiting for Laura, okay. So now we go on to item 5C. 5C.
So, I'm sorry, the motion passed.
Okay, well, I was waiting for you to say something.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hey, I think we're all in.
I was trying to take a screenshot of his vote.
Okay, all right, good. So 5C, approved resolution 2020 XX, agreeing to the terms and conditions set forth in the administrative order on consent from the Environmental Protection Agency.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Edge. This report comes forward as a result of an inspection conducted by the EPA and Water Board a year ago, June 2019. Letters were exchanged summarizing various violations that they saw in June of 2019, plus a history of violations dating back to 2007. And so basically out of frustration, the EPA is taking this course of action as a way to remedy and to get the city back into compliance with what is known as the National Pollution Elimination Discharge Permit, or the MPDES permit. So the city's wastewater treatment plant discharges water into a creek and that water has to be met, has to meet certain standards. And we report every month, we do tests, we're vigilant about testing and reporting. And for many years, the answer was, yeah, we have this problem with salt in our water and we have this pellet plant and as we know, it's laying on its side out in San Juan Austin Grove. So the question was, what are we going to do to take action and mitigate this situation? So when I was communicating with the EPA and the Water Board, October and in December, we shared with them that we were in the process of creating master plans that would analyze and recommend improvements for both our water system and our wastewater system. And then from that, we would be able to pick various projects to make improvements to get us back into compliance again with the MPDES permit. So what this is, is a response to that that we received in May. We've been negotiating back and forth. Where this administrative order on consent does not have penalties or fines in it, it stops short of that. And so the page four of this administrative order on consent outlines a calendar for the city with certain milestones. And I've taken those milestones back to our consulting team. We were to get our master plans and final draft this week. So we are right on schedule with this plan. We've been meeting every two weeks with the EPA to share with them the status of our work. And I think we've built confidence in that they want to move forward with this order of compliance. So they asked if this item be considered by our city council last week. I explained that we were not meeting last week. Prior to that, we had a planning commission meeting on Tuesday. So this is the first opportunity to bring what staff believes is a final draft of the order of compliance. And so where the schedule is tight, it is reasonable in our opinion. It gives the city the option, the opportunity, I'm sorry, to take from the master plan and the PER, the Preliminary Engineers Report, recommended compliance projects. And we have until October 15 to do that. And because we're getting these final drafts here in August, we should easily be able to meet and confer about what the best compliance projects are for the city. And then we are also going to use that PER for USDA grant and loan application. And so the two are related. And then hopefully we would know by then whether or not the USDA grant and loan application was successful and things would begin to come together towards the end of September and October, where we would have a compliance project selected and the funding plan together. So that's, that's where we are and that's the goal. So what this does is it puts it down in writing and says that we'll finish phase one of this work, which is identifying the project and the financial plan and designing the project between now and October, November, not designing the project, but selecting the project, pardon me. And then, and then phase two is a design and then the bidding and then the construction of the project. So we talked about the PER in length at our meeting last month. There's some variables that we're trying to tie down, various costs that we're trying to tie down and finalize for the council. We'll bring it back and go through it again in a lot of detail. Meanwhile, to satisfy the EPA's request, and we get on board with their order of consent, their way of complying, the staff is bringing forward further requests, the administrative order of consent for council's consideration. The ultimate schedule is to be in full compliance with MPDES permit by December 31st, 2023. That we're certain we can do. It's nuances of the schedule in the middle that we have options and the ability to change as things come up. We have potential third-party agreements. If we were to work with City Pollister, that's a third-party agreement. If we work with San Benito Water District, that's another agreement that we would have to execute. There is environmental work. The USDA requires federal environmental work as well as state environmental work. There are right-of-way acquisitions potentially and other complicated things we have to do. As long as we have the self-confidence of them, that we can move this schedule around between now and December of 2023, we're confident we can meet the December of 2023 commitment. So here we are, appeasing the EPA. We have a good working relationship with them, we want to stay on a positive note with them and we're confident we can meet these schedules. So that's what this is. We're not selecting any kind of compliance project tonight, we're only agreeing to select one by October. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Does anybody, does anyone have any questions or comments for our city manager? Mr. De Vries, do you have anything to say?
No, nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, how about Councilman Freeman? Okay, so we'll go on to Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have anything to say?
No.
Okay, I'm hoping, Councilman Sessa, can you hear us? Do you want to type a message? Well, he's talking.
Do you have any questions, Sessa?
No, okay. Could you see him? He said no, I think. Liz, did you see him? Okay.
Yes, he said no.
Okay, all right, so.
Comments?
John? Do you have any comments?
I've got some comments.
I'm sorry? We can hear you now.
Madam Mayor, we cannot understand you.
John, she said go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, this has been a long time coming. Some of us have been talking about this for the past 10 years and being ignored. So I guess this is my chance to say I told you so. And I'm glad that we're finally working on it actively and I have great hopes to fix all the problems, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any public comment, questions?
See your hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, all right, so we'll go on. So now we need a, a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2020, whatever we're on, agreeing to the terms and conditions set forth in the administrative order on consent from the environmental.
In our will second.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember De Vries? Councilmember DeBries?
All right, yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes, he said, he typed it in.
You can show Laura the comments.
Yes.
He typed it.
Laura needs to see it.
Based on Don's computer, over to Laura.
She's on the same.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge? Yes. All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. All right, so now we go on to item five D, tenant and utility assistance funding with federal CDBG CARES Act funds.
Thank you, Mayor, this will be a quick report, because we've been talking about this, we talked about it last month, the complications of using CDBG and the opportunity to work together with the county in Hollister. And Monday, the city council in Hollister approved an MOU stating that they wanted to work with the county, and so, the county board of supervisors approved that this afternoon. So, that means that all things are aligning to meet the August 30 deadline. We had a public hearing. This is a potential for our citizens to receive a grant from the CARES Act called CDBG-CV. It is $63,558,000. We would not be able to get this money if it weren't for the CARES Act, otherwise we have to compete for CDBG. So, this is really good news. Public services and the like are eligible as long as the folks that apply for these funds are victims of COVID. So, a classic example is unemployment, making it hard to pay rent. And so, on August 6, we had a public hearing with about 35 members of the community, again, a shared public hearing with the county in Hollister, and there was support for this program. And quite frankly, if we did not have the help of the county administering this program, taking the lead for the city, I don't think I would have recommended it to the council, because we just don't have the staff capacity to manage it. So, therefore, the MOU, I'm recommending that we send our 17% of administrative money to the county of about $10,800, leaving $53,000 for the San Juan residents. This is rental assistance for up to three months of rent. Or, it could be also for utility assistance. Now, the county administers a PG&E utility program, they approved another $123,000 for that program today, but that does not include water, does not include internet, and so, I've encouraged the county, and they're open to this idea of looking at including water and internet, especially all the topics this month have been about COVID-19 in school and access to the internet. So, that would be great if we could help some other privileged families access the internet with this money. I think it'd be right in line with the objectives of helping our low and moderate income residents. That's what the CDBG Community Development Block Grant is intended to do. So, in doing this, for the $10,000, what do we get? We get promotion, we get awareness in our community, we get staff time at the library conference room, taking in applications, meeting with our residents, qualifying them, applying for the funds, giving the funds to the residents in a timely fashion, and then surviving the audits and all the financial tracking that would require. So, that is, that's the nature of this, of this Community Development Block Grant, and this resolution is due back to the county in short time, and so, we'll bring it forward tonight in order to meet that deadline. Okay, thank you.
So, when is it due?
It's due to the county by the third week in August, because they have to pull the whole application together by August 30 and get it mailed to the state. The program, there's a HUD program that's administered by the state HCD, Housing and Community Development. And I'm throwing a lot of acronyms at you tonight, so bear with me. This is all government lingo. I don't know, every government set deadlines for August 30, so all these reports are listed. Thank you.
That's good. So, now, did you touch on A?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We're having a hard time hearing you, so when you look away, I know you're looking at the screen so you could see what's going on on Zoom, but when you face that direction, we can't hear you, and it's very muffled. See, if you can face towards Don, or if Don could put the mic closer, everyone is having difficulties.
Get closer to you?
Yeah, I can't move it because of the cable.
Oh, oh, so you're talking about the monitor?
Yeah, so when you, yeah, when you face, when you're facing Don, we can hear you much better than when you face away. Everyone's having a difficult time.
So, can you hear me right now, okay?
That's better, thank you.
All right, you're welcome, I didn't know that.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Okay, thanks, Liz. So, item five D, did you include, this is one, and did you include two? Do we vote on?
Oh, first is a memorandum with the county and city Hollister, and the second is a resolution for HCD.
Okay, so we need to vote on the first one, but first, we, 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 are there any comments from Councilman DeBries?
No comments, thank you, Don.
Sure.
Any comment, Vice Mayor Jordan?
Thanks, Don, and yes, thanks to the county and the city for agreeing to join us on this and to be the admin of the program.
Okay, Councilman Freeman?
Councilman Freeman?
All right, does that call the passing speakers and say thank you to the camp board also, who is doing a lot of work on this?
Yes, yes, they are.
So, Councilman Flores, can you hear us? Can you type your comment?
He says no comments or questions. He typed that on there to everyone, so Vice Mayor tends to see that as well as Don.
Okay.
Yes, he did.
Okay, so, we're going, I need to entertain a motion?
What, I don't see any comments from the community.
Not in public.
From the public. Okay, very good.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2020. Laura, what motion are we on?
So, I can't give you that at the moment, I'm sorry.
Okay, to approve resolution on agreeing to the terms and conditions set forth in the MOU with the City of Hollister and San Benito County to administer the federally-funded tenant and utilities assistance program for its low income, low-income residents.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Sessa, second, did it?
Okay, Laura has to see.
No, I see it.
Oh, you do? Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, so, roll call vote. Councilmember DeBries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Okay, I see him shaking his head.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you did his.
Thank you.
Right now, thank you, Sessa. I know. Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge? Yes. All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, now, we move on to item D two, approved resolution 2020 approving an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto. From the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program, coronavirus response round one, CDBG-CV one, NOFA dated June 5, 2020. So.
Did you see the first and the second, and?
We need a, we need a, a motion.
Sessa, Sessa makes the motion, I'll second it.
Thank you. Councilmember DeBries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores? Yes, he's nodding.
He's nodding yes.
Yes.
He typed yes.
Okay. Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge? Yes. All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so now we move on to item E, approve an agreement with Joni Al Genekki and associates to prepare plans and specifications for Franklin Circle Park.
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, the community members came to my attention almost the day I started working here a year ago, and so, maybe I didn't need to put a $15,000 contract before the council, but I'm kind of celebrating a little bit, because we're making progress, and I wanted to assure the community that we were making progress. So, when I got here, it wasn't clear that this circle inside the cul-de-sac, was it right-of-way, was it the city's parcel, was it supposed to be part of our park system? The parks master plan did not consider it when they came from the Strategic Planning Committee, and if it was going to be a city park, then it needed to meet the standards. So, we did an extensive title research dating back from that, signed by Mayor Bautista in 1961, homework, and confirmed that that development company in the city had joint ownership, and then later confirmed that the development company, obviously, no longer was around, so it was actually the city's parcel. So, having said that, in your packet is a community design that one of the neighbors put together, and it's a beautiful design, includes a bocce ball court, which is unique to our city, so I like to call it a community pocket park, and that's the way it has been for the last 50, 60 years. They've actually had block parties and taken advantage of it, but right now, it's a disarray and it needs attention. So, we want to do this right, and we did a topographical study of the property already, and we're ready to let a landscape architect take a look at this plan that's in the back of your packet here, the bocce ball court, specific trees and so forth, just to make sure that it all fits on the property and fits on it safely. We pay attention to irrigation system with back throw devices, we pay attention to the ADA, and we make sure that it was built to city standards and became an official part of our park system. So, it's taken a while, but we're making progress, and I think it's downhill from here. We do have park improvement funds from our development projects available to use on this project, there are community members who've bestowed money specifically for the development of the park, so this is kind of an exciting time, and we look forward to working with the community to get the park built. So, with that, I recommend the council approve the resolution to finalize the design.
Does anybody have any questions? Councilman Jordan?
I think this is fabulous, well done, all.
Okay, great. Councilman Freeman?
Yes, I think it's a great idea, and a great project, and it's one thing to afford right now, so let's go for it.
And Councilman DeBries?
I second that.
Okay, so, Councilman Flores?
He says he moves to approve.
Okay, so, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we need a second.
We need public comment.
Yeah, public comment.
Public comment, that's right, thank you. Do we have any public comment? It, you know.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Hi, Galaxy 08, who is that?
Hello, I put my, I put.
Is that Yolanda? Yeah, I don't know, you went away and came back and asked this galaxy. It's Yolanda, everybody.
Okay, Yolanda.
Yeah, public comment, I'll read it.
Yes, I'm the circle, and we've been working hard on this. We personally got rid of the blocks, center blocks, our governor of Franklin Circle, you know Mary, it's Mary Morales, and we've been working on that, and the wife who's been here knows all of us, and Jimmy, kind of a family professional gardener, and if I'm mistaken or not, it's not the family of Bledy, don't they, so they put the park?
Yes, they left it with the rotary, and so, certainly, we need it.
Okay, so, and then, again, we want it to be made after Bledy Ford, which was an outstanding person, she was awful, she was my neighbor, and she, and we wanted to dedicate that park to her, because she was very involved in, well, she was the first there, there's Mary that over, so we just want to recognize her, and I just wanted to reiterate that we have Bledy there from the family of the Bledy Ford for that park, and we are, as a circle, will help out with people all coming to do with, to help assist whatever we need to do with the cost and labor and what happens. And that's it.
Thank you, Yolanda.
And Mary will be a part of that too, our Mary Mary, and this is another thing that I want to thank the council, the, you guys for the kids, because there's a lot of kids here that just play in the street, and this would be a benefit for them to learn bocce ball. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I would like to thank Don personally, because this park has been in the making for years. I want to say over like 30, 40 years, it's been in the making, and no one has made it a reality until Don came to work here. So, thank you, Don, for making it happen.
Yeah, thank you, Don, kudo to you.
Yeah, so, okay, so, we need a, we need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Lonnie Genekki and associates to prepare plans and specifications for the Franklin Circle.
Okay, we need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, so, roll call vote. Councilmember DeBries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores? Yolanda, please.
She can say it. We worked it out.
So, he's asking what happened to his motion. We had to have public comment first, and so, we hadn't had that when you made your motion.
So, do you have, you got a second on the motion, right?
Can you do second?
Well, I have Vice Mayor Jordan made the motion, and Councilmember Freeman was the second, and so now we're doing the roll call vote.
Sorry. So, Councilmember Flores, I need your vote. You voted yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge? Yes. All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go on to item six, discussion items. A, COVID-19.
Thanks.
Okay, and of course, I'll order.
Sure, just a brief summary for you. I've heard both of the board of supervisors today, an update from Tracy Belton. Tracy Belton wonderfully took time last Wednesday to meet with our business forum. That was awesome to describe the fact that we're building the plane as we fly it, and so things are often confusing and complicated, and business owners got to ask her some great questions. So, that's all really good. We continue to work well through the Office of Emergency Services and Chris Mangano. We don't leave here as often, there aren't near as many changes. The state, the governor spoke on Monday at lunch, and his focus was all about schools. How do we get kids back in school? And we have to get off the watch list. And we have to get off the watch list. So there's five criteria that I shared with the council last month. Originally, we were meeting all those criteria. But we've had trouble in the last few weeks, especially the positivity rate. The positivity rate is of the number of tests completed, what percent are positive. And we're trending now at 9.3 positivity rate. And the state's standard is less than that, it's closer to 8. And then the state's standard for number of cases per 100,000 is 100 per 100,000. And we're trending at 187 per 100,000. So that's a pretty high number. That's, I'll tell you, Mercedes is like 546. So our community is in worse shape than ours now. We seem to be holding our own, we're just not at the state's standards yet. So what does that mean? If we were to come off the watch list, Santa Cruz County came off the watch list this week. They have to remain off of the watch list, below the state's standards for a couple of weeks before they can relax and begin to open. But it really only applies to opening schools. Because the governor's mandate to close indoor dining and restaurants and so forth remains in place even if the watch list is removed. So getting off the watch list could potentially help more schools open up their classrooms and invite the students back. As we've seen with North Carolina University, having students arrive and turn their ride around and go home. And this is just a really complicated and frustrating time for everyone. So we've offered our total support to Michelle Huntun and the school district. If we can use our facilities to help, we will. And our Third Street Transformation update continues to grow. I took time today to walk the street with our community liaison, Liz Turner. I saw the businesses doing fantastic work. And had some really constructive conversations with several of them. Some of them I hadn't met before. So thank you, Liz, for giving me out there on the street, giving me out of my office. Budget, budget, budget. We managed, we managed to have nine of the parklets completed and with five in process. That's more than I thought. Originally, I was thinking seven or eight. So this is fantastic. We also have six in the application process now. It's not, it's not clear how serious these applications are. But it shows that there's a little bit of a contagious nature to it. That the community is excited, that the visitors to our community are excited. And hopefully, it helps them stay longer when they come and visit us. We probably had an enforcement update when we talked about the mask order. I think what Hollister and the county were looking at were more stricter than just the wearing the mask. And so, in both cases, they had a 2-2 vote. So that's unfortunate, and so here we are. The business grants are coming forward. We had 209 businesses in the county apply for these grants, not to exceed $15,000. They will be, all the, all the grant applications will be evaluated with the goal of August 24. And then notification the next Monday on the 26th to the business owners. And we've met more than one business owner today that can't wait to get that notification on August 26. So our, our, our businesses are lined up. The checks will be written by September 1st. This is part of that CARES Act money that the county has to spend fast and furious. So hopefully, there's enough money to go around to a good percentage of the 209 applicants that they receive and that our businesses do well. We've been really competitive in that area. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, mayor, city council members in the public. That's, that's an update that I'd like to share with you.
Thank you, Don. So, Councilman Flores, do you have anything to say? Any questions that you want to type?
State Secretary says nothing.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have anything?
Just that, I, you know, this was supposed to end, and here we are, talking about September 1st issuing checks. I can't wait for that to happen. Again, I'm super proud of all of our businesses. And I'm thrilled that we had 209 applicants fill in for these grants, well-run people.
Yes. Thank you. Councilman Freeman, anything to say?
I'd just like to echo what Vice Mayor Jordan just said. It's great. And then I'd like to say, we're on mask and socially distant. We get that positivity rate down to 5%. So the kids can go to school, and we can have our lives back.
Thank you.
It's gonna, it's gonna be hard, but I think we can do it if we try.
Okay, thank you. Councilman De Vries? Question or comment?
What was that?
Do you have a question or comment?
On the COVID, on the COVID.
On the update?
No, no, no comments.
Okay, all right, all right. I'd like to just congratulate all the, all the applicants, you know, for going through the trouble of doing that. But also Liz Turner for putting in so many hours in all that she's been doing. I know it takes a lot of work. And also, Don, thank you so much for helping out because it helped a lot. And I know that our merchants that applied, you know, I'm glad that they went through the trouble of doing it. And I'm hoping that they get what they need. So, anyway.
It could pay for a parklet or two.
Yeah, that's good, I hope so. So now we go on to Item 6.
Thank you, thank you, Liz. Awesome.
Item 6, B?
So this is an election update. We reached a deadline in the past few weeks for incumbents and new candidates. And Laura Stent, City Clerk, has an update for us.
So members of the council, if you look at the last page in your packet, it, this was published by Deputy City Clerk Pates. It shows the four candidates that have qualified for the two seats on the city council. They went through the nomination process and filed all their papers. And you can see those also on the county's website. There are two other seats that are up. One is a city clerk and the other one is city treasurer. And during that nomination period, no, no one filed. So at this time, there is no one that is qualified for either one of those seats. And the way they say it on the website is no candidates filed to run for this office. So there is still the write-in period, which if you look at the candidate's handbook that the county publishes, the write-in filing dates are September 8th through October 20th. Besides the regular paperwork that candidates need to do, they need to write a statement of write-in candidacy. And they need to do a nomination petition with the required number of signatures, which I believe is 20 this year. And then if somebody does qualify as a write-in candidate, what happens on the day of election is the county will provide a list at the polling place, which for the city of San Juan Batista is one place. They will provide a list that lists who the qualified write-in candidates are.
Is that the community hall? Is that the one place?
I'm not involved with that process. I would guess that's probably where it would be.
Yeah, usually it's there.
Yeah, that's where it's usually going.
We offer that to them for free. And we usually will, we can provide some staff as well. So they're very happy to have that location.
And I heard, City Clerk sent, that if people are nervous about mail-in, there's been a lot of talk about the post office. And they could bring their ballot to the polling center, right? They could handle it, right?
So, the last election I worked, there's many opportunities to drop your ballot off. You can actually take it to a secure location that's behind the county building. You can bring it to any polling place within the county. And there's a secure box where those go. And like I said, I've worked with San Benito County elections. And they are all about protocol and security. They follow chain of custody all the way through from ballots before they're even voted till they're delivered again back to the county courthouse for counting.
So is there any way for us to publish who the write-in candidates are? Because if you're, if you're sitting in your kitchen pulling out your mail-in ballot, you won't know that there's a write-in candidate until you, unless you go to the polling place, right?
So it will end up on the county website where they list all of them. You have to kind of know what you're looking for in order to get to San Juan Batista. You have to scroll down.
We could find that and publish it.
To the bottom. So as I said, they have to qualify during that period. And once that write-in list is available, I do not see why that can't be published by the city. It's, those are city offices, so.
Can we also announce that, or Laura, can we announce that during a city council meeting?
Sure, once it's public, it's public.
Yeah, once they've qualified, they'll be posted on the website and it's public knowledge.
And it's official.
And I also wanted to ask, if I have my ballot ready, I can walk it to the, to the registrar's office, right, and hand it in?
That's correct. They have a drop-off box when they're open. You know, when, the last time I worked in election, we were not in the COVID situation. So I don't necessarily know what their restrictions are, what their operating hours are. But they keep up their website. They also have a very good Twitter account. If there's anyone involved in Twitter, you can follow the San Benito County Elections Office on there. And they'll let you know what's going on.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Very good. So now we go on to Item.
Did anyone want to speak on this? Can I add one quick thing on this? Since we're lucky for people to be city clerk and city treasurer, I might add that these have one extra little benefit. They are actually eight positions. So it's $100 per month for each. And so, you know, that might make a difference or something.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Rest of the, if you're gonna take this, we're free.
Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have anything to say?
I do not.
Okay. Councilman De Vries, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, nothing, no, nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Flores, did you want to type something?
He did.
Oh, he did?
There's no comments.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you. So, City Manager, John Reynolds, do you have anything to say?
Just, just real quick, special meeting on the 25th. We'll pick up probably just the water. I don't know that there'll be any COVID topics to discuss, unless there are an interest of the council that we know. But we'll publish just a brief agenda for the water issues that we continue to work with for next Tuesday. And we'll bring the budget back hopefully the following week. But we don't know that we'll have a planning commission meeting. We don't have any topics for the planning commission at this time, so.
All right. So, City Attorney Deb, do you have anything to say?
I would just like to send best wishes out to those firefighters that are fighting that fire out on River Road. Because I think our city manager's house is kind of proximate to that fire. So they are able to get it out and they stay hydrated.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So thank you, everybody, for showing up, all your comments. And we can adjourn now.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Oh, okay, Sessa is the second, he just raised his hand. Thank you. Everybody have a good evening. Bye. Eating and jerking.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thanks, Liz. Thanks for your, good night.
Thank you.